All right, folks, it's quarter eight for seven. I guess we can't wait any longer for Michael. So I'm going to begin, although he was the mainstay of this. But basically, we're looking for ideas from owners. So you're here. And it's not a background, it's just too big of a room. Good evening. My name is Jerry Bureau. My primary residence is here in International Village, although I have homes in other parts of the country. I normally live here six months of the year, but have been here for the last 18 months, due primarily to caring for my aging father. Now that he is gone, I hope to resume my travels. So I don't intend to be a candidate for political office here in IB. So I'm just here to try to see if we can work together and be civil with one another. I'm not here for any other reason but for making IB better because IB is my home. I like IB. I invested in IB. I'm not only a resident owner, I'm also an investor. I have three additional units besides the one that I live in. I'm a businessman by training and experience. One of my business interests has been real estate. I believe IB is a good investment even now. And I would like to invite you to see what has been done to a recent foreclosure I purchased last month. It can be a template for taking foreclosure units off the market and turning them into productive assets. We have an agenda here that Michael has prepared and Michael is going to take charge of. The only thing that I would like to touch on is say, we'd like to try to make sure this is a learning experience for everyone. Everybody has different ideas and we want to respect everybody's ideas. We just want to make sure that we're civil with one another. Okay? There's been a lot going on in this country in town hall meetings, particularly over the summer. And you know, we don't need that. You're entitled to your opinion. I'm entitled to my opinion. And all we can do is share our ideas. And then each of us have our votes. So you know, we don't want to have any unpleasantness. Okay, with that, I want to turn it over to my late friend, Michael. Late meaning not on time. He's still my friend.
Hello.
Michael Schenkel.
Michael Schenkel here. Oh, sorry, I'm late. I mean, I work 16 hours a day, mostly for the village. But I thought I would go home and get out of my destruction clothes and something better on to wear. But I'd like to thank you for coming. I'd like to thank you for coming. And this is actually my second town hall meeting. The first one I did was two years ago. And my agenda two years ago actually is 50% the same as it is tonight. It has to do with delinquent maintenance and foreclosures. With regard to delinquent maintenance and foreclosures, we have a problem. The other half of tonight's meeting represents the plan to deal and address these problems. In 2006, according to the then-president, George Karen... George, you're here? George Karen, according to him, 2006, delinquencies were almost nonexistent here in the village. In December of 2007, our delinquency rate was about 3%. And there were only a few foreclosures. Today, we have over 300 owners that are behind in their payments. For the purpose of discussion, I see these 300 owners in three groups. Group number one are owners who are paying their current maintenance and assessments but are carrying forward a small and questionable balance. This balance consists of late fees and other discrepancies of $200 or less. I recommend that we resolve these delinquencies by waiving these balances as long as they don't include bank charges or... Primarily, they are late fees and discrepancies. And I recommend we resolve these by waiving these balances, period. That group represents about 100 of the 300 delinquent owners. The second group, which also represents about 100 owners, are people facing financial hardships. The Great Recession, as this period of history will be referred to, began about three and a half years ago in the summer of 2006. While South Florida was trying to recover from a major hurricane, Hurricane Luma, as the whole country and the world entered into an economic downturn. I recommend waiving the legal fees and the late fees on these people who have delinquent balances of $1,000 to $3,000 and get it down to a debt delinquent balance and giving them a payment plan of up to 24 months to help these owners remain in their homes. That leaves the last 100 in this group. And there are day unit owners. These are chronically delinquent. They make up about 15% of the unit owners here in the village. But they represent about 75% of our financial problem. The people in this group are enjoying a free ride as they wait for the banks to foreclose. Banks are averaging over two years during which time we receive no maintenance or special assistance monies. Frequently, they don't pay the maintenance and they don't pay their mortgage. And they just wait until the bank comes in. It's taking as much as 26, 28 months for this to happen. Until then, these owners are protected from eviction by Florida law. If the apartments are overoccupied, we can't evict them. I recommend that through short sales and as soon as possible, we pursue the transfer of these properties, thereby cutting our losses and through the encouragement of our Investment Opportunity Amendment, turn those units back into paying owners. There's over 5,000 condo associations here in South Florida. And we're all familiar with it. And we're facing similar problems. Florida has experienced booms and busts throughout its history. This bust will pass. This area's property value decline began three and a half years ago. And some experts say it may only last another six months, three years. The... No, I'm sorry. Anybody hear anything I said? Okay, well, there's over 5,000 condo associations in South Florida with similar problems. This bust will pass. And this area's property value decline began three and a half years ago. And some experts say it'll last for another six months, three years. This housing market... The housing market will not recover in every community at the same time, but it will return. The puzzle is not how this happened or who is to blame, but rather how, as an association, we're going to deal with it. I recently attended the Inbury Association's town hall meeting where the condo crisis was discussed. I met with Lauderdale Mayor Richard Kaplan and Senator Ring. There was an informative presentation about the challenges facing South Florida condos and the need for legislative change. That's Jeremy Ring, our state senator, who has an office in Margate. And he's not a typical politician, but a man who was one of the founders of Yahoo! A multimillionaire, very wealthy man who decided to go into politics to make the world a better place. And he didn't do too well in Tallahassee because there's a lot of old boy politicians there that kind of told him to sit down and shut up, kind of like what happened in the year a couple of years ago when I brought it up. The housing market will... Well, when I was speaking with Jeremy Ring, this informative presentation about the challenges facing South Florida condos and the need for legislative change, Jeremy Ring plans to reintroduce legislation at the next session that will be very useful and beneficial to all Florida condo communities. All condo community owners must show their support for Senator Ring's proposed legislation to assure our financial recovery. The Senate bill, Bill 998, has provisions that directly relate to the amendments that we are currently considering adopting and the direction we are trying to take by changing our condo document amendments to deal with this housing crisis. But Senator Ring introduced these three proposals. Number one, lenders must complete their foreclosure actions on abandoned or investor-owned units or homes within 12 months from filing or risk losing their statutory cap on liability. This would apply to condominiums and homeowners associations, which basically means where we struggle because the banks take 26, 28 months to take possession of these foreclosures, many of which are vacant or rented, they would be required to take title of these properties in 12 months. And 12 months after 90 days, actually. That's his first proposal. That was till in discussion in committee, never even made it out of committee. The second proposal that he introduced last year was that the Condominium Act would be amended to allow associations to amend their documents to require tenants to pay rent directly to the association when the owner, landlord, is delinquent without having to obtain the owner's approval. For such an amendment, so long as the amendment passes by the threshold set forth in the governing documents. Our new amendments do just that. Based on legal precedents and recently upheld in the Florida Department of Appeals, which refers to blanket receivership, which is the problem with the properties that are in lieu of foreclosure that we can't do anything about. Previously, we could have tried to foreclose on these, but there are legal fees of about $2,02500 for each unit to take possession of the units. Now there's something called a blanket receivership where you can get a judge to approve this blanket receivership, the receiver's appointed. And for $1,02500 fee, all the units that are in foreclosure on the property can go into receivership for one filing fee. We don't need that because our amendments include the right to authorize the association to collect the rent from the tenants of the delinquent owners. But this is the direction. Legislatively, it was not accomplishable because of the status quo in Tallahassee. But judiciously, lawyers came up with an approach that is this blanket receivership to give the associations the ability to take back the property, collect the rent, and even rent it out themselves until the bank comes and takes title. But our plan, which is very similar, is better for a number of reasons which I can explain to you later. The third proposal from Jeremy Ring was the ability to suspend condominium use rights. Currently found in the Homeowners Act, if you're a homeowners association, you can keep the delinquent owners from using the condominiums, the pools, the amenities. But in condo associations, you don't have the same rights. So he introduced legislation that would suspend the rights of delinquent owners to use the condominiums such as the pool, clubhouse, and recreational facilities. In the spirit of knowledge being power, to succeed, we must act. Our new amendments were drafted after many long committee meetings held over a period of more than six months. Please read them carefully and vote. They provide our best chance to avoid the need for increased maintenance and will ensure our survival. I have copies of these forms. I have proxies here. If you haven't loaded yet, have any questions? There are proxies available tonight. We need to achieve a quorum. In order for these amendments to be adopted, we have to have a minimum quorum of, I guess, 278? Is that right? 278 unit owners have to participate or else we will have to ask for extension and continue this. But the benefits from the passage of these amendments will have an immediate effect on the village's financial condition. Based on that deal, what I'm calling preparation meets opportunity. Based on information from Florida's Bureau of Economic and Social Research and information from the U.S. Census Bureau's Modified Census Count, retirees and younger immigrants will be the thriving force behind Florida's housing recovery. The sunshine's sake is soon to boom with boomers. Baby boomers are projected to stampede into Florida from 2010 to 2030. As housing prices drop to more normal levels and the number of boomers nationwide spikes, people born between 1946 and 1964, these boomers are expected to descend on Florida in large numbers and will increase their standing in the state's largest age group. The reason? They're nearing retirement age. Unfortunately, this Great Recession has negatively affected people near retirement. Their 401Ks and savings have diminished temporarily and they have had to post-home retirement. But these boomers haven't stopped thinking about coming to Florida. The state housing prices have become more affordable through Florida's tropical climate remains a big draw. The percentage of 65 and over population has been flat since 1980, relatively the same for the last 30 years. And this older population is about to boom with the boomers. Between 2010 and 2030, the percentage will nearly double from today, increasing the retiring population from 3.5 million to nearly 7 million people over this period of time. As you can see, based on this information, the new amendments will help us prepare for the housing recovery. All I can ask you to do is participate. Please vote. It's your community. I'm here to help save it. Thank you.
I have a question. Can you explain as specifically as possible the procedure we're subject to now? The legal procedure we go through when somebody starts? You know, for the sake of the people to really understand the elements, would you explain the procedure that we must operate now and what the difference will make when we have the amendments? The right to collect rent, you know, from the tenants directly when owners are collecting rents but not paying the association, which is our chief source of problem and a great source of income to us? Am I correct, Michael?
Yes.
So what goes on now? And what will happen? When that is instituted, what will happen for us? And why is it better? Why is it better to have it in our docs? Better even than blanket receivership?
Well, I think what... Hello? There it is. What Lynn is referring to are the two amendments that were drafted by David Broar, our collection attorney, and myself. And in 2006, we had a new amendment that required that all new owners put three months of maintenance in an escrow account. And at the time, the conditions for that money to transfer were that you had to leave it there and maintain an on-time payment schedule for 36 months. And then by written request, you could get that three months of maintenance back. Another of the conditions of transfer were if you wanted a foreclosure, the association could take that money. Or if you sold your unit, the unit owner who sold the unit would be entitled to that money back. However, and I asked George Karen, who was involved in this amendment at the time, why they didn't include the condition, which was delinquent maintenance? You know, that if you are delinquent in your maintenance, we can transfer that money to our operating account through applying it to your back maintenance. But George said, "We didn't have any delinquent maintenance at that time. Didn't occur to us, believe it or not." Three and a half years ago, we had almost zero delinquent maintenance. So one of the changes to our condo docs, which this amendment proposes, is that we added one new condition, which is delinquency. So if you are delinquent more than 60 days, you will be given a notice and have a chance to bring it up to date. If you don't, we will be authorized to transfer that escrow maintenance to our operating account without it going to the attorneys and wasting more money on legal fees. We can simply transfer that money after getting a notice after 60 days prior to the 90 days of delinquency. We will transfer that money to our operating account. Currently, we have about $120,000 in this escrow account that is restricted. It can't be used for anything. No key benefits from it. Some of it belongs to the association now, but we are unable to touch it because our condo docs don't include the condition of being delinquent. Now, that's one of the two. Now instantly, once these amendments are passed and filed, we can transfer somewhere between $35,000 and $40,000 from that escrow account into our operating account. So that's one way we are going to, you know, get an infusion of money through these amendments. The second one is the amendment for, which would be number five. But this authorizes us... Right now, we have about 130 owners who are not paying maintenance and haven't for over a year. As many as half of those owners are renting their units. And what they're doing is pocketing the money. And they're not paying the bank. And they're not paying the association. And there's a tenant living in their unit illegally. So what we'll have the authority to do is to notify them that they have 10 days to comply with either that the rent is now due to the association directly. And they can come forward. And if they qualify through our application process, the state will offer them amnesty. And they can remain and pay the rent to the association. In some cases, if they're not qualified or have criminal backgrounds or have five, six people living in a two-bedroom, chances are they are going to leave or face eviction. They will be notified that there's a pending eviction. But they can come forward and stay if they're willing to pay the rent to the association. I believe there are as many as 50 of these that if we could garnish that rent, with an average rent, we're talking about $800 a month. If we could garnish 50 of those, that's $40,000 a month that we're currently not receiving. We're bleeding at the rate of around $32,000 a month. So the second way that these amendments will help us financially is by taking that money from the tenants of the delinquent owners, which will be legal. We can't do it now. Is that what... Was that your question, Linda?
Yes, I had... That tells the difference for those two amendments. But also, if you go into an owner's escrow to replenish what they owe, does that also bring them...
Well, yes. What we'll be doing as soon as the amendments are filed is transferring that three months of maintenance and applying it to their delinquent account, their balance, which would go to our collection attorney to deduct it from their balance. And so if they were to recover and go into a payment plan, they would have to replenish that three months of escrow maintenance as well.
Excuse me, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
In order to solve a problem, I learned a long time ago, you really have to find out the reason why there is a problem. Has anyone tried to contact the owners who are renting the apartments to find out, Mr. Owner, why aren't you paying since you're getting the rent every month? Let the owner tell you why he's not paying.
Well, you know, this has been done and they have been communicated with. And the reason is, in most cases...
What did the owner...
The reason is that they purchased that unit in 2005 or 2006. And they paid about 60, 70% more than it's worth today. So from a business standpoint, it makes more sense to them not to pay the mortgage and pocket the rent for two years, two and a half years. And, you know, it just makes a business... Makes business sense and it protects and finds the current Florida laws.
So that's what they all told you? Because the value of the site went down?
The value of the property, they paid, say, let's say they paid $100,000 for a one-bedroom apartment. And today is worth $35,000. So they put 20% down. And they owe $80,000 on this one bedroom that's worth 35. So instead of continuing to pay for it, they decided, "Well, I'll just rent it out and pocket the money for 28 months." Very simple. That's their motivation. That's their reason.
And in each one, it's still the same thing?
In most cases, that's the reason for it. What other reason would you think of? Also, people who've lost their jobs and can't afford their maintenance and special assessments. But it's largely people who thought were in the peak of the housing boom and paid much more than it's worth today and are walking away from both the mortgage and their maintenance obligations.
I have a question. You were talking about the three months' maintenance money that they're not going to purchase. Is they... I spoke to you about six months ago regarding that money and asked if it's in an interest-bearing account. And at that time, I was told it was not. Has that been...
Well, you know, when the amendment was written and filed, it included interest. Continental, our property management company, at the time, didn't realize that determining interest on something that over a variable period of time at a variable interest rate would be impossible to determine.
Very simple.
Yeah, simple? For over three years, when you're paying 1%, 2% at the most, 1.5%, what we're doing to make up for that?
Hasn't been rectified?
Yes, hasn't been rectified in that we are offering people the average interest rate over that three-year period in addition to their escrow maintenance.
Hasn't been made gradual act?
Yes.
Took the time to have purchased?
Yes.
I... Could I see it writing somewhere?
Frances, do you want to confirm that? We're...
I can't hear what you said, so I can't confirm anything.
You can't hear me? She's asking what we're doing about the situation where the original amendment on the escrow maintenance included being held in an interest-bearing account. And Continental did not put it in an interest-bearing account because they realized it would be impossible to do the accounting or whatever the reason they had. So it was not put in an interest-bearing account. And we have been offering people the average interest rate during that period of time in addition to their escrow maintenance based on the average return on savings.
Hi, so just give a number of views. I have a question. You were talking about earlier that you wanted to be able to waiving all these late assessments and that we're under a certain amount of money?
Late fees, not late assessments.
Late fees, but when you're waiving. And then in the next sentence, you said make a suggestion as to how we can make payments.
Well, that's a different group.
Or is it postponed to the...
Now, you know, what you don't seem to have followed was that there are about 300 people who are over 30 days behind in their payments. About 100 of those have small balances. They're paying their maintenance assessments currently. But they're carrying forward $100, $150 on balances which are undetermined. Some of them are due to late fees and some are just questions that can't seem to be answered.
But just you mentioned waiving those. And then in the next sentence, you said making arrangements so that you can go back.
That's a different group. They're talking about... There are three... I broke this down, so you can understand it. Okay, the first group is small delinquent maintenance, carrying forward. The second group are people who are falling behind because of hardships. The second group, we're offering a payment plan... The second group, we're offering a payment plan to get back on track, extending it over a 24-month period, minus legal fees, minus the late fees, no interest free, in equal payments for up to 24 months to keep these people, save these people from going into foreclosure.
One final question is my name. You mentioned keeping people that are delinquent from meeting the common ground and the pool, et cetera. How do you propose to do that?
That's not, legally, we are not allowed to do that. I explained that, that in a condo association, you cannot prevent owners from their rights of the county area. What we can do, and we are planning to do, is the barcode privilege at the gate. You cannot deny owners, even though they don't pay their maintenance, cannot not deny them entrance or egress from the property. But the barcode is a privilege, so you can deactivate the barcodes of the delinquent owners and require that they enter through the visitor's sign. That will, that will be a change that they, that shows that we're watching the store, so to speak, and they're not going to be getting away with what they're doing much longer.
I'm sorry, I need that one more final question. I've asked a number of times, party tournament, our documents, aren't we supposed to have a cap of 25% rental maintenance?
That's correct. And I have a lot of proposals.
I've asked a number of times what that, what the threshold capacity is for, and I haven't even yet received any answers.
You wouldn't say that? Do you ask or answer?
Yes, numbers.
How many renters there are, legitimate renters?
Yes.
And who did you ask?
Probably more than legitimate.
Does anybody know?
No, no.
Well, yeah, well, we know how many legitimate renters there are. We don't know how many illegal renters are. Legitimate renters, from my knowledge, there are about 140.
Can I talk about percentage?
Percentage? That's more about fifteen through eighteen percent.
Fifteen to eighteen percent?
Between, yeah, between fifty and eighteen percent of the total number of units here.
Really?
Yes.
Is that for building?
No, that's fifteen, that's, we have 832 apartments here. Fifteen percent would equal 120. So we are between about 120 and 130-something legitimate renters at this point. And our plan is to locate and identify the illegal tenants and evict them, which we'll be able to do after these amendments are passed, and offer them amnesty. Some of them could stay if they qualify. If they pay the rent to the association, the balance will be evicted and have to leave. Twenty-five percent of 832 is 208. So we can have 208 rental units here at 25%. We're somewhere around 140, legal.
Thank you.
Your honor. Yes, Linda?
I wonder, Michael, can you explain, I know there's a lot of problems with people paying around two, even three years while the banks are not paying, basically squatting in the units. Can you explain, through the amendments, how we will add some prevention catching things before they go to banks and before we're out of, you know, we have no control over them? Catch things before. What can we do about these people, you know, that we have no power?
Well, you know, once the bank takes title for the property, they always evict whoever's in there, whether it's the owner or a tenant. They get evicted.
Once they take title?
Once they take title.
What about the time to pre-foreclosure? At the time they take title, where are people staying, two years?
Well, those people will be, the owner of record and the, there's no tenant of record, but the owner of record will be notified that there's someone living in their apartment, and they will either be evicted shortly, or they can come to the office and apply for residence, or evict them. And then, once the apartment is vacant, we can rent it ourselves. People like that money until the bank takes title.
So why are we not doing it now?
Because we don't have the amendments that authorize us to do that. Yes, Kim?
I just had a curiosity. How is somebody able to be here and not have somebody go after them, not paying a, make one single penny of the maintenance within three years? Moving in three years ago and just never paying a dime of maintenance or assessments? How is that able, somebody able to get away with it for that many years?
Well, I thought I'd explain that because the banks...
Three years now?
The banks have no time limit. They're not required by law to comply with any time period of taking title to the property.
No, I just mean in this community, the management company, or, you know, how is somebody allowed to get away with it three years not paying their maintenance? Not the bank. The bank doesn't care if they pay their maintenance or not, as long as they pay their mortgage.
Would you for the microphone, please?
I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about the...
Turn it off.
I'm just wondering, someone who bought their apartment three years ago, now we have assessment, one or two assessments since then, say, three years from today, they've owned for three years. Then maybe they're paying the mortgage, I don't know. But how is someone allowed to get away in a condo complex, having a management company board, what treasurer's looking over this, three years without paying a dime and just coming and going? Three years, just going unnoticed under the radar?
Kimberly, I explained that to you already a couple times, but I'll do it again. Those two particular cases you referred to have filed bankruptcy. And once they file bankruptcy, they go under different laws, and we are not able to evict them, and it goes through the bankruptcy courts, which buys them more time than we can get them out.
How long does it take for them to file bankruptcy? Like, they're two years into not paying, or two and a half years, or two months, then they file?
There is...
I just want to understand it. I'm not blaming anybody.
It has to go through the bankruptcy court system, which is a purpose, a purposeful attempt by the owner of record to stay there without having to pay anything for another year. And we have no control over that, and we cannot do anything to them. It's a very unfortunate situation for associations, but...
And Kim, Kim, the two years that you're talking about, the first year, they haven't filed bankruptcy. They just haven't paid.
I'm talking three years. Some people, three years.
They didn't file until after, about two years.
Delaying, delaying, and then the last part is filing, and they're covered under the final.
So our management company would just constantly, every single month, send this person a notice. So, say, they get 36 notices every month with a late fee tacked on. Every month, this person's getting a notice sent to them. They're a resident who doesn't pay in three years. Is that how it works?
Once they file bankruptcy...
All right, I'm not saying bankruptcy. Me, I missed, I missed one payment once. And, no, I didn't miss one payment, excuse me. My payment went to a wrong unit due to KW or whoever made the mistake. Two weeks later, I got a late notice in the mail saying, "Now you owe this month plus a late notice." Now, I came in with a cancelled check, finally, three months later, it was, you know, finalized, and they figured it out. But, I mean, if you don't pay for three years, you get a notice every single month from the management company? You're late?
Yeah, I would imagine that's the case. I mean, you get a delinquent notice each month that you're delinquent.
I don't, I'm not sure how they handle the mailing to the unit owners who file bankruptcy because they are protected.
No, we're not talking about bankruptcy. She's not talking about bankruptcy. That's the end result is bankruptcy, and you addressed that. She's saying, before bankruptcy, they hadn't paid for month after month after month. And the assoc, I've got it, I've got it, Linda, I've got it, okay? And they are not paying every month, and she wants to know, before they got into bankruptcy, how come we haven't been on their case earlier? That's really the question.
Well, what we're allowed to do by law is put a lien on that particular unit. Unfortunately, in most cases, we're the second lien holder, almost in all cases. And they owe the bank, say, $100,000, and they owe us $5,000, so...
So that's what we're doing. You're answering their, you're saying you're putting a lien on the property. They are owners of the property. We can't force them out. We can't evict them. They own the property. We can only lien the property. It's different than a tenant. A tenant you can evict. An owner you can't evict. You can only lien. That's the answer to your question, okay? We send the bills every month. We give it to the attorney. The attorney liens the property, and they continue not to pay.
Their options are limited.
And eventually, they file bankruptcy, and then our options are even more limited, okay? So that's the only...
More often, the foreclosure finally becomes complete, and they, they just wind up there 27, 28 months for free.
Yeah.
So we're like 36, but...
Yeah, all right.
You can't blame the association or the board. We are doing everything possible to get these people out.
As long as we lien the property. Yeah, as long as we lien the property, that's what we can do. Here's another question, invite Sid.
Can you tell us, how many investor-owned apartments are delinquent?
How many investor-owned apartments we have here?
Punks of, punts of investors that haven't rented that are delinquent?
Well, depends on how you define investor. There are people who...
Well, people that own apartments and rent them now.
More than, now rent them out.
More than one apartment. They own two apartments, three apartments, 22 apartments. We have all kinds of people.
Well, we have one owner who owns way more than is allowed by our condo document.
More than one apartment. That would be an investor, okay?
How many of those people?
Yeah, I mean, I've never seen a report, but that would be interesting information.
Sid, my understanding is that you made that calculation yourself. And you told me of 115 that are 90 days late, 15 were investor-owned, and 100. So you answered your own question. You just wanted the people to know.
Yeah, well, that is the rate of delinquency of investors.
That is what, that's what Sidney told me. He had a list of the investors. I'll come over to you, man. He had a list of the investors, and 90 days late, he said there was 115, and 15 of them were investors, which means 100 of them were resident occupants, okay?
Over 90 days, over $1,000.
Over 90 days, over $1,000.
Investors have a much higher rate of paying their maintenance.
Yeah, well, that's it. It sounds like about 90% are owner-occupied that aren't paying, and about 10%, a little more than 10%, are investor-occupied, investor-owned.
Thank you. My name is Jane. You just may remark that there's one owner or some owners that own more than the condo documents allow. How is that possible? What do our condo documents allow?
Maybe Scott Samuels can answer that.
Excuse me?
Maybe Scott Samuels can answer that for you.
Well, he didn't make a remark. You did. I was asking him how you did.
How can that happen?
Yeah.
Well, Scott Samuels proved many of them, so ask him.
The answer to that question is, there are certain allowances for more than whatever was the limit at the time, okay? One allowance, the big allowance, was the builder of this community. The builder of this community, when he converted from old rental to a condo in the docks, he was allowed to sell to anyone as many as he, as they wanted to buy. He wasn't, his, his units were not restricted as far as ownership. And there are some people that bought more units than they were allowed to own directly from him, and he was allowed to do that, okay? That was part of, that was the foundation of people who had more than was allowed. I didn't know it was allowed.
I think it was only one owner, like one owner, that owns that bought for the rental.
Well, I think originally, you were only allowed to own two when the developer sold the, sold the place, you know, made it a condo. But again, he could sell to a buyer more than two, and you couldn't say boo, okay? So that's my understanding. If there's anyone that knows more than that, please speak up.
I only know of one owner who owns five, and he bought them in 1980 from the developer, and he still owns them, and...
I have another question regarding that. Say, an owner who owns five, he rents out four or he rents out five. When we vote in our amendments, how many votes does this gentleman get? Does he get one vote, or does he get five?
One vote per property.
One for each property. So if he owned five, then he gets five votes?
Correct.
That doesn't seem right to me.
Well, that's the law. We don't make laws here. We just follow them.
Well, I think you do make amendments, don't we?
Amendments don't supersede law. You have to comply with the laws of the state of Florida.
Right.
And the vote goes with the ownership of the unit, and you can't take, separate that.
Okay, so if somebody owns a lot of units, then they really have a lot of...
Well, the limit is now four. You're not allowed to own more than four apartments here.
So there's nobody here that owns more than four?
Only two people that own.
Previous to the four.
One owns about 19, and one owns five from the original developer.
Thank you.
Okay, more questions, more questions? I guess, just to give you a break, I wanted to maybe talk a little bit about foreclosures. As I mentioned in my first comments, I recently bought a foreclosure that has been empty for about two years. And hasn't been paid, the maintenance hasn't been paid, and of course, the assessment hasn't been paid. Eventually, the owner lost it to the bank, and it went into foreclosure. And I bought it, and it was my fourth unit, so I'm not allowed to buy anymore. But Michael had the bright idea, and all I had to do was provide the funds. And Michael thought it's a great idea to take this unit and fix it up, upgrade it, make it a model unit, and try to encourage someone, we haven't figured out the entity, to do the same thing with the other 30 to 50 or 60 foreclosures that we have. Because the real dilemma that we have here is that these units that are in foreclosure, not only aren't they paying the maintenance, which is the mainstream of our operating budget, okay? If you figure maybe $300 a unit, if you're talking about 50 units, you're talking about $15,000 a month that we're not receiving. Not only don't they pay that, which kills our operating budget, puts a big hole in it, they're also not paying the assessment. And not only that, worse than that, even when the unit is sold at foreclosure, the assessment is lost. It's not the same as a unit owner selling their apartment. When a bank sells the apartments, they do not have to pay the assessment. For some reason, in Tallahassee, the bankers tickled the politicians, and they got out of the responsibility that every other owner has. I don't understand it. I talked to Senator Ring about it. I talked to the mayor about it. And it just is politics, you know, and it doesn't make any sense, but that is the law. So we're losing that. Not only we lose the operating money, but we're losing the assessment, which is the long-term capital that each of us are paying or paid for the money that we borrowed with the $7 million and the $1 million SBA loan. So it's a dilemma, and the longer, in my mind, as a businessman, you know, who lives here and owns here, the more we delay, and letting these foreclosures sit there, we are strangling ourselves, okay? And it's the reason, the main reason why we would be facing a new assessment, because we have to make up those payments for our operating budget. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure that out. So my proposal, when I, I mean, I went into this one unit, and I saw the numbers made sense. Here was a corner unit, a two-bedroom unit on the first floor on the lake. And the bank was asking originally $54.9 for it. And I spent about two months or so working with a real estate agent, and it was a difficult job for the Realtor. There's a lot of paperwork in these foreclosures. He, we finally made a deal at $45,000 for a two-bedroom corner unit. Now, it needs work, you know, and we're figuring it needs about $15,000 in work to make it look new. And we're doing that. We're putting that in. I paid cash for it, 46-something with closing costs, and now we're paying for the remodel. And once that's done, we're going to have a unit that has sold for as much as, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, $175,000 in good times. We're going to have, I'm going to have something that is going to cost me $60,000 to $65,000. So I think that's something, as soon as I'm done, Max, okay? I think that's something for the association to consider, you know? And I'm going to participate with the association with this. and I'm going to participate with the association with this as a sample, as an example, uh, because I have spoken to people here who have sounded me out in the past, knowing I'm an investor, and they've asked me about investing here, and I tell them, this is a great time, blah, 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 and then when I speak to them later, they tell me, oh, they're afraid, they're afraid to take the risk, they're not really in the business, they, you know, blah, 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 and that's, that's a problem, that people aren't going to be afraid to invest, even, you know, in a time like this, when to me, as an investor, it's a no-brainer, so if we can get together a group of people along with the association, uh, and figure out how to do it, and votes will be a consideration, where possibly those foreclosures won't have any votes, okay, they won't have any votes, that's no problem, the point is to save the village, the point is to get the income from the maintenance, the point is to not have places that look like a slump, you know, when you walk around the, around the village, so I'm trying to, uh, get that type of thinking going, and all I'm getting is, I'm trying to line my pockets, I'm trying to get richer than I am, you know, in the meantime, I'm taking sixty thousand dollars out of my pocket, in the meantime, I'm taking the risks, okay, and I'm willing to put it up as a sample for others, you know, so that we can get rid of all these things off the market and make the association solid. Yes, ma'am?
I congratulate you, it sounds like you got a pretty good deal on that, even though you were to spend fifteen thousand to renovate it, I wanted to know if you also feel obligated to pay all the past due maintenance system that, on my part, and the other investors if they do the same.
Good question.
Good question, I happen to have with me right here my settlement sheet, and I'll show it to you, because I'm sure they'll believe you, okay, this is the settlement sheet, and fortunately, essentially, my understanding, because of Michael up there, uh, maybe two weeks before this settlement, Michael saw that the, that a lien was filed against this property for past due assessments, past due maintenance, and you can see right here. Association dues. Ninety-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, ninety-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, out of the forty-five-thousand dollars that I paid, ninety-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars was paid to the association because Michael sat on, uh, our lawyer to file a lien on the property, so that's the other, thank you for bringing that up, ma'am, that's the other benefit, not only are we going to have the cash flow from the maintenance that's going to be, uh, now collected, but we're going to collect any delinquencies that have been filed against, lien against the property, which can be tens of thousands of dollars, you can see in this one instance, it was ninety-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, so to let these properties sit there, and not to get a group of owner, people who live here already, or people who invest here already, people who know International Village, and want International Village to succeed, I personally, when I saw the possibility, I talked about it for forty-eight hours, and in forty-eight hours, I was able to get pledges of a million dollars to do that, to do that very thing, but then again, as soon as I made the presentation, I was, you know, I, the hammer came down on me, that I was bragging, I was this, I was that, I'm getting richer than I am, I'm lining my pockets, all nonsense that doesn't attack the problem, the problem is the shortage that the association is facing because of properties that are sitting there and not paying their fair share, okay, and look, I can't fight it, I don't need properties, I don't need, I love it here, you know, I don't need to be here, but I happen to like it here, for six months, it's perfect, even the eighteen months that I've spent here because I had to, was fine, I got to know people better, and I say I know half the people in the room now by first name, that was terrific, so I would like to remain here, I'm, no one's gonna chase me away, it's a great place for me, but I would also like to see it run financially properly, and right now it's not, because there's too many cross voices, you know, one says this, and then the other has to say the opposite, and we can't make any forward motion, forward movement.
Uh, Jerry, I'd like to ask you, you're talking about, to my understanding, like a limited partnership with, well, let me just finish, and then you can answer, with the association that has a beginning, a middle, and an end, so there's a process, right, and in that process, what the, uh, there would be no voting power to those units, as the association can own units and doesn't need to, and there are no votes connected with that, but there's a beginning, a middle, and an end, and a benefit, I want the people to know this.
Listen, I have a, a, a concept, that's exactly what it is, it sounds workable to me, it has to be, you have to sit down with the proper people, and you have to talk about the possibilities, the how to accomplish it, okay, I have my thinking, but then another person brought up a different way of looking at it, you know, my original thought was, look, this is the problem, the problem, of course, is the operating money, which is the maintenance, but the other problem is we've been stiffed with the assessment, so let's say the average assessment is ten thousand dollars on a unit, just take that for round numbers, the association has been stiffed because the foreclosure, the assessment was lost, so to me, I thought a fair deal to get accomplished this, and as you say, you have a beginning, a middle, and an end, was to buy, get this group, in my case, do it myself as a sample, buy it, fix it up, and then set a price that I could sell it at, that would get back the money that was lost in the assessment, and an equal amount for the investor, that's how I thought the group would work, and in the meantime, the investor would be collecting the rent, which would give them a return on his investment, so that way, okay, Kirk, that way, everybody can win, okay, now, just, I'm just gonna repeat it to make sure it's clear, and I'll put numbers out there for you, okay, in my case, I paid forty-five, another thousand for a settlement, forty-six, let's say the upgrade was fourteen, for round numbers, it became sixty thousand dollars, let's say we lost, the association lost ten thousand dollars in the assessment, so we fix the selling price of the, of the property at sixty plus ten for the association, plus ten for the investor, so we set it at eighty, or eighty-five thousand dollars, so we can settle for eighty thousand dollars, so when the market turns around, and the prices go up, you sell it, you have that target, somebody in the office is keeping record of that being the target, and once we get into that, we offer it for sale at that price, the association can have their money, and the investor can have their money, but in the meantime, during that time, the association is benefiting from the, from the maintenance, and the investor is, is benefiting from a positive cash flow of owning that property at a price where the rent more than covers his expenses, so to me, you know, it makes common sense, I mean, there's different ways of doing it, I forget, I think it was Paul that gave me another way of doing it, that sounded very interesting, and I'm sure other people have other ways of doing it, that's fair to the investor, that's fair to the association, the other subject that was brought up was votes, we don't need the votes, okay, the point is to get the money flowing for the association, it's not the, not the votes, the investor doesn't need the votes, the investor needs the community to be successful, so if we weren't fighting with one another, if we weren't, uh, figuring if one says one thing, the other has to say something else, and then we're gonna question their motives, they want to get richer than they are, they want, all that stuff that has nothing to do with the project, the project is a worthwhile project, how do we get these properties that are eyesore, the properties that are not doing anything for us, how do we get them to work for us, okay? Kirk, I'm sorry, one second, Kirk.
I like it, one of the things I like about what you said, Jerry, is you didn't mention the benefit, now, the benefit here, is that if you fix these properties up, and they sell higher, well, our purpose grew up because of the comparables.
That's correct.
And this could help pull us in, I owe nine thousand dollars more of my apartment's worth right now, and that, because the comparable's so bad.
That's another, that's another...
That's another subject, if we work together, okay, and not fight with one another, we take someone like Kirk, and there's a lot of people who are underwater, you know, I'm assuming if Kirk's here, it means that he's paying his maintenance and assessment, right, Kirk?
No problem.
But then, so he's a very noble person, a very noble person, a lot of people in this situation figure, why should I pay, I'm underwater, you know, each payment I make is not helping me really, it's helping the bank, you know, so I say to someone like Kirk, I said, Kirk, why don't we go to the bank and see if we can help you, uh, make a short sale, okay, not you, you can't make the short sale, a third party has to do it, but, you know, to me, I've done it, okay, so it worked for me, I went to someone who owned a property, had a hundred and fifty, actually, a hundred and twenty thousand dollar mortgage, but he was behind fifteen thousand dollars in payment, and was paying fifteen percent in interest on it, and it was a multi-use property, it was a, it was a store downstairs and an apartment upstairs, and this was in Philadelphia, and I said to him, he wanted to borrow some money to make his payment, I said, Ken, you're crazy, you know, you're underwater on the property, and your interest rate is ridiculous, and you're too far behind, you're five months back in your payments, why don't we go to the bank, and I'll buy the property, I'll offer them a price, that they'll get their money upfront, and I'll buy the property, and after I buy the property, I'll make you my partner for forty-nine percent in the property, and so he's a forty-nine percent partner in that property, I bought a property that was worth close to two hundred thousand dollars, a multi-use property, for eighty thousand dollars cash, so I'm a winner, he's a winner, I was able to give him the mortgage on his forty thousand dollars, but his forty thousand was really previously seventy-five thousand, half of a hundred and fifty that he owed, or a hundred and forty, so it was seventy thousand, so everybody was a winner, the bank, the bank had bought that mortgage in a foreclosure, so that bank was also a winner, who knows what they paid for it, that eighty thousand dollars, maybe they only paid twenty cents of the dollar, they owed twenty, owed, it was only a twenty thousand dollar mortgage, we don't know, we have to help one another, we have to help those other people here, we're quick to call them fishers, I know another, a unit owner here that bought a place for a hundred and sixty thousand dollars and put forty thousand dollars down, they had a hundred and twenty thousand dollar mortgage three years ago, well, the place is worth seventy-five thousand dollars, and they have maybe a hundred and fifteen thousand dollar mortgage, so they're walking away from it, they're not paying the maintenance, they're not paying the maintenance, they're not paying their assessment, they're not paying their mortgage, they're trying to rent it to people, okay, and get the money, can't blame them, you know, because, and it's not, any, through any, it was just bad luck, not only did they pay a hundred and sixty thousand for it, but they put thirty thousand dollars in improvement, I saw the place, I couldn't believe it, the granite, the beautiful shower, and the spare two-bedroom, couldn't believe it, I feel so sorry for those people, but we just wanna pile on them like they did something wrong, they just were unlucky, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael.
But just though, with the foreclosure, delinquents picture and perspective, in the next six months, we are gonna see here more than twice the foreclosures we saw in the previous six months, uh, this is easily understandable when you, when you count the number of foreclosures that are in the pipeline, the bank takes the twenty-four to twenty-eight months to take title, we have about fifty to sixty units here that are in the eighteen to twenty-month aging range, indicating that there are gonna be fifty to sixty foreclosures here in the next six months, every foreclosure costs the association about ten thousand dollars, so if you take that number, we're faced with another half a million dollars in losses over the next six months, unless we have a plan, and the plan that we're suggesting is allowing those units to be purchased with the association's blessings in cooperation, because there's no limit to the number of units that the association is allowed to own, they will not have any voting rights, these units will not have any voting power, so anybody would say, well, the investors will have too many votes, there are no votes attached to these units, because the association will be partners, and the association can't vote, but the purpose of this is just to redevelop our community by building model apartments, taking liability, and turning it into an asset through investor interest, it's as simple as that, we're faced with fifty, sixty foreclosures in the next six months, this is a plan to turn them around.
This also, it includes on the, the maintenance rolls, right?
Well, as soon as, yes, as soon as they transfer their back, bank maintenance, meanwhile, those fifty, sixty units have not paid maintenance for two years, or more than two years, immediately they're back on the maintenance rolls, that's number one, secondly, they're gonna be upgraded to a new architecturally reviewed standard, of which I'd like, tomorrow night, we're gonna try and offer to invite, or, let me just invite you all to a, no?
You're not gonna be here till tomorrow?
Oh, we'll be a hundred percent done, it'll be ninety percent, if anybody would like to see an example of this work, uh, tomorrow evening, we'll be glad to show you, give you a tour of this upgraded unit that was, uh...
Tomorrow's the meeting, tomorrow's the meeting.
Well, yeah, well, tomorrow, as you mentioned, when people come into Moses, usually it's five, six hours of vote counting, if anybody would like to wander over tomorrow night, you'd be welcome to see what we've done.
Michael, Michael, so then people have a real picture in their minds, there's a situation you're talking about, which if it were to be done, would be done to the benefit of the association, and no control, no manipulation, a sense of voting, getting power, but it's to generate money, so there's that, that potential, right now, when a unit goes to the bank, and the bank finally takes title, maybe after two years, and we finally get some money from the bank, what is it that we get? We don't get the assessments, we don't get the bank maintenance, it's so small, what is the percentage of money that we get?
At averages, at averages, ten thousand dollars per unit that we lose when the bank takes title.
No, I'm asking, what do we get?
We get, we get either six months maintenance, or one percent of the original worries, whichever is less, and then the bank, once they take title, is responsible for the regular maintenance from that day forward, so...
So under the...
Yeah, we get about, maybe eighteen hundred dollars out of a ten thousand dollar, twelve thousand dollar loss.
So the great difference is to have a unit, once it would be purchased, if this were to happen, that would be producing, from day one, be on the maintenance rolls?
From day one, maintenance would be paid, and my plan is to buy these units in a short sale, not waiting two years, but after they've been in the foreclosure process for six months or a year, approaching the bank directly as the association to acquire these units in short sale, and we would negotiate the, the assessment, say they owe ten thousand dollars in the assessment, well, the bank, one of the reasons the banks don't want to do short sales right now is they don't wanna have to pay that back, so I'm suggesting we compromise, and we'll let them pay only half of it, they owe us ten thousand, we'll settle it for five thousand, and then Jerry, on the, on the other end of the sale, will contribute the remaining five thousand back to the association for the proceeds of the sale of the upgraded unit, so the association has the potential of recovering all of the half million dollars, yes?
Sounds good to me.
Very generous.
All right, any other questions? To me, it just, you know, it's a... To me, it just, you know, it's a, it's a business thing. It's a problem, okay? We have a serious problem. But we don't have a problem, a serious problem alone. There's no homeowners association or condo association that isn't facing this problem, okay? We're fortunate, okay? Those associations that don't have owners that have capital don't have anywhere to turn. I remember a friend of mine that used to have a place in the Circles of Inverary, on the other side of, of Oakland Park. And he had his daughter there. He was in the same business I was in. And he saw his unit go down from like forty thousand dollars, he finally sold it for fifteen thousand dollars. You know, that place, the Circles of Inverary, I think it was called, was lovely, but it just didn't have any banks that would back it, and it didn't have any owners that would back it. Okay, we're lucky here, you know?
You've got to also consider that International Village is a unique community. This is a property of forty acres on Peninsula, which makes it unique, among other things. But the security potential here at International Village, because it's surrounded by water on three sides, has not been affected by the change in neighborhood that's affected other communities in Inverary or in Lauderdale. The fact that we're almost an island gives us the potential to be redeveloped and have a lot more value than other places in Lauderdale. So by redeveloping, the potential here is just great. And I know a lot of people here love this place, and they'd like to see it brought back to the previous glory. Well, that will never come back, but we may be able to reinvent it as something different but just as good and interesting to people from all over the world.
We can have our own glory.
Yeah, right. We can have our own glory, right. Yeah, no, it's a beautiful place. I never really thought about that, Michael. The fact that we're surrounded on three sides by water, which makes us a little impregnable, so to speak, or less pregnable. And it is a great-looking community, you know? I mean, there's a downside to that. When we had Hurricane Wilma, you know, we suffered a lot more. I own a unit in Las Vistas across the way. That's a very tight community. And Hurricane Wilma didn't disturb Las Vistas the way it disturbed International Village. But, you know, it's just such a beautiful place. It's always a pleasure for me to come home, and this is home to me. So if we can figure out a way of making things work from a business sense that's good for everybody, I think we're foolish in wasting our time fighting with one another. And right now, that's where we are. I cannot, I cannot recommend to fellow investors to come in here and buy foreclosures if I feel the next administration that's going to be here is going to be mad at me, for example, and not think business-wise, and they're going to make it difficult for the investor group to rent the apartments. And that's why I immediately stopped what I was originally so excited about, getting a million dollars, more than a million dollars pledge in forty-eight hours. But then, once I heard all the nonsense that I heard over the emails about how I'm lining my pockets, how I'm so rich, how I'm doing this for myself and not doing it for the benefit of the village, hey, they, it's mere, you know? I just said, this is not something that I can go and recommend to investors because, you know, they're going to be, they're going to make it difficult to rent a place, which is what I'm going to be holding out to the investors. Look, you're going to put money in there, and while you're waiting to make your profit, you're going to be able to get a return on your investment. That's more than what you can get in today's interest. So I, I just did it for myself.
This is just, you know, from, this is just my point of view, that in any situation, if you don't consciously and actively do what you can do, it's going to be done unto you. In other words, people are going to come and take. So from my point of view, to set up, to consciously, actively set up a cure or condition, a situation that is truly beneficial, is far better than letting it just ride to the wind and hope beyond hope. And someone is going to come in anyway and do, and take those empty spaces that we leave and have not taken care of, and not to our advantage either. It's just my point of view.
I have to, I'm not sure I understood it. But whatever, I hope, I hope it was. All right, we're starting to lose some patrons here. Does anyone have anything to say? It's so nice to see some friendly faces here, you know? Do you represent someone, do you live here, sir? Oh, okay, all right.
On a question.
Yeah.
About voting. Can we vote tomorrow?
Vote?
Can we vote?
She's saying, yeah, tomorrow is the, yeah, you can vote up until seven o'clock, I think. What is your...
Let me, we have proxies right here, right now. If you'd like to do it tonight?
No, no, you can vote right up. In fact, in fact, if you voted before, and for some reason you changed your mind between when you voted and tomorrow, you can change your vote. So you're allowed to vote up until tomor... No, 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 you have to get back, no, only once. You have to take back the original. And, no.
How many, how many things we have to sign in? It goes to five.
That's it, right here, it's the ID.
Yeah, there's one, yeah, that's it. That yellow page, just one. You just check.
With how many amendments?
There's seven amendments, and it needs your signature. You check yes or no. One page. You put it in the input and bring it to the office.
Anybody needs a proxy, and they've lost their proxy or thrown it away, we have more available here tonight, or you can get them in the office tomorrow. We can also fax in your vote, which is something I was aware of.
This will vote pledges.
Well, I have a little play here. I see we have Christine here, and I saw Clyde earlier. I attended Christine's first dinner for the holiday on Saturday, and I really enjoyed it. And I understand she's having another dinner on, is it Sunday night or Monday night?
Monday.
Monday night, Monday night. A break for fast dinner. So if anyone would like a nice place to go to celebrate the holiday or not, just a nice place to go, she's having another event then. All righty, folks, it's been an hour and a half, I think. So any other questions or speak up? Don't be bashful.
I came late, okay? I apologize. But, um, do we have an illegal, I don't know if you already answered, do we have an illegal way to, for the people who are not paying enough money and are still living in the complex? Can we give...
We did go, we did go over that. We did go over that. We'll tell, we'll tell you after the, we went over that. We'll talk to you after the meeting. We don't need to review it again, okay? We'll tell you, okay? Any, any, anything else? Anything else? Rose, you got nothing to say, Rose? No? Okay, Francis, you want to say anything? No? What about you? I'm sure you've got something to say. All right, well, thank you for coming. And nice, you know, bring your friends next time, your neighbors.
That's the only one.